We good to go? Oh, I saw it. I saw it stunk come out the door. We're good. I would like to call this Joint County Council Planning Commission Workshop on Cluster Housing to Order. Before we get started, obviously in light of a tragic incident that took place yesterday with the assassination of a public speaker in general, and given today's significance in our history as a country, I do want to offer a moment of silence after we have an invocation. I know it's not on the agenda, but I feel like it's appropriate. And before we do that, I wanted to turn it over to Counselor McGahy to address today specifically. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for your service, and also for anybody in attendance behind me or anybody who's served and is a veteran. Thank you for your service, and this moment of silence is for people that you've obviously lost as well. But I'll turn it over to Vice Chairman Bradley for the invocation, and then we'll follow it just with about 30 seconds moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's bow our heads. Our gracious heavenly Lord, we just thank you for this day, and Lord, we know your word tells us, absent from the body is presence with the Lord. And Lord, what happened in nine eleven and what happened yesterday, we know those who knew you, Lord, will be in heaven at the very second. Lord, we pray that you be with our country, be with our state, be with our county. Lord, lead us and guide us and give us self-control, intelligence, and wisdom, because we know knowing you is the beginning of all wisdom. I thank you for this meeting we're going to have. I pray for the productivity of it, that you lead us and guide us and help us come to a clear, decisive decision on the matter at hand. In God's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, everybody, for that. I'm gonna go ahead and take this out of the stand because we don't have a microphone in ways to make... Oh, we have another one. Excellent. Well, I was hoping I could get it out of front of my face at some point in time. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the ordinance review. We're obviously discussing the cluster ordinance, and I know that there's been people that have put some time and effort into this. I do see on our agenda where we have several items coming up, the overview of stakeholder feedback, which we have to get to before the official council PC discussion. So as far as the ordinance review, I will just open it up to whoever would like to kind of start and address any of the, I guess, the changes that have been made, suggestions, or where we're currently at with the ordinance as it stands, and then we'll go from there to the next item. Vice Chairman.
The... This is a workshop, and this is just a start. We realized that when we wrote this, there was some stuff that we would leave out, but this is not in ink. This is pencil, so to say. So we're trying to find the point where citizens are happy, developers are happy, and it's what's best for Greenville County. So we'll make sure that we know this is a workshop to get to where we need to be.
Thank you. So I know everybody that's at the tables up here anyway, we've been given some of the documents. I don't know if people in the back have had access to that at all, but there are some red line suggestions, I'm guessing, not necessarily additions, but potential amendments to... And I guess I'll ask staff this question. This is not what was presented in the stakeholder meeting. This is the updated since then, or... Okay. So I guess I'll ask staff for their advice on this, with a good suggestion B, since they don't have these documents, for us to read through the suggested changes, so they would be able to hear this as well, and...
Yes, in summary format.
Okay. Well, I'll just start. I won't make Rick talk the whole time. I might make Steve talk a time or two, just to put him on the spot. The first red line that I see is 24.2.1, the density table. It says the preliminary plan application must include a density table that at minimum lists total gross acres permitted density per acre, required open space, total, and if applicable by type, and total number of dwelling units proposed. The next section, and people can... I know this is a workshop, and we're trying to have proper procedure, but if you want to stop me at any time, just yell. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. 24.2.2. By the way, any questions on 24.2.1? I know we're gonna have a discussion, but I figure we can address some of these as we go through, make some notes. All right, here in nothing, we'll go to 24.2.2, open space delineation. All property designated for required open space should be delineated on the preliminary plan. A breakdown of open space in flood plain and on steep slopes should be shown on the preliminary plan in total acres and percentages of gross acres. The planning commission shall determine the appropriateness of the dimensions of the required open space. The open space on the preliminary plan should have meaningful dimensions, proportions, and placement. And I know the people behind me can read, but this would be for the people that are watching online too, so they can at least hear. Section A, only the required acreage to meet the cluster requirements shall be identified as open space. All other areas that will be owned and maintained by the HOA shall be identified as common areas. Section B, the developable and undevelopable acreage of open space shall be shown on the preliminary plan, and proposed uses for these areas shall be shown on the plan. C, areas to be wholly preserved, such as wetlands, endangered species habitat, or cemeteries, shall be identified as preserved area, no access on the plans. Limited access will be provided to cemeteries for maintenance and family visitation. Anything to address in that section specifically before we move on? All right. Yes, sir.
Well, just a simple question of... I see the draft, which that's a version 81525. We've got a red font on ours. Why is that one blue? Are we actually looking at the same document?
I believe so. I'm thinking that's probably just the digital version of what this is.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're... Everybody's looking at the same thing, using the same measuring stick here.
Absolutely. Chairman Bickel, did you have a question or comment there? Okay. So... And we can just make notes on some of these points that people are making, and that way we get to the discussion. We can bring those back up if somebody wants to kind of note that.
No, I thought we eliminated the terms.
I think Vice Chairman Bradley said he agreed, that he thought we had struck that language.
Reason being, trying to define it.
I think a good way to address this, and definitely speak up if you disagree, but we can go through and kind of make these notes as we're reading through the changes, and then when we get to the discussion, we can come back to these and kind of flush through it and go from there. I believe the next several red lines, anyway, are just adjustments to the points. I don't think there's anything really to discuss on the rest of page three or page four. There's just some word changes there. The next one I see is 24.5 on page five. Yes, sir?
Everybody, hello? There we go. I just turned it off and on. I guess that's all we gotta do. If we can look at same page five, 24.3, I'd like to bring up real quick... I think we're setting ourselves up for failure with that at the very end there, the paragraph A. "The minimum area shall consist of continuous, not divided by an existing public or private road or recreational or navigable body of water." All right, so when you go to the definition of a navigable body of water, and I'll read this rate for everybody, and this is a navigable... This is a term from our government, federal government. "Navigable body of water is a water or body, including rivers, lakes, and canals, capable of being used for interstate or foreign commerce, either in its present condition or after reasonable improvements." So the creed criterion is a physical capacity to transport commerce. We don't have any bodies of water in Greenville County that transport commerce. So I think we're setting us up for failure. What we're meaning to talk about here, I believe, is streams and repairing buffers. We're kind of... But we need to change that language.
Okay.
Again, gonna be a loophole.
Sure.
There could be a river run right down, and developer says, "Oh, it's not a navigable body of water."
Right.
So again, that's a loophole term we need to get rid of.
All right, we'll make that note, and we'll come back to that in the discussion, just to make sure everything finalized. All right, so 24.5, final plats. "The following information must be shown on the final plat at the time of submittal. Number one, a density table using the same format as on the preliminary plan. The density table must also include the proportional area being recorded. Number two, notations indicating the delineated open space, including meets, mets, meets. I say that right or wrong, meets, thank you, and bounds. Number three, open space easements." I signed up to read all this. "Prior to the recording of a subdivision final plat, an easement shall be placed on all lands and private waters used to satisfy the open space requirements of cluster development. The easement shall be solely for the purpose of ensuring the land remains undeveloped and shall not in any way imply the right of public access or any other right or duty not expressly set forth by the terms of this easement. The easement shall run with the land, provide for protection in perpetuity, and be granted to the county, subject to acceptance, a county-approved nonprofit land trust, the homeowners association, or other qualified organization approved by the county. The easement shall include a complete meets and bounds of the property being designated as open space." Number four, notes to be included on the final plat. A, this development has been approved by the planning commission as a cluster development and has provided certain acreage of open space. B, open space easement. "The removal of trees and natural vegetation is permitted in the development phases for the purpose of utility crossing easements, passive recreational uses, and drainage ways with the proper notations on the final plat. Neither the developer, property owners, or other subsequent contractors or builders shall be granted permission to remove or destroy any trees or natural vegetation from the open space area for passive recreational or any other purposes without the express written permission of the community board, or homeowners association, or property owners, or trustees having jurisdiction over the implementation and enforcement of the subdivision's covenants. If some part of the open space was designated to meet stormwater management requirements, permission must be obtained from the land development division for any alteration of the designated open space. Normal maintenance and the removal of dead or fallen trees are permitted and recommended." C, the open space for this development is protected by an easement that has been recorded at the Greenville County Register of Deeds office and as outlined in the subdivision covenants. Anything to note there, Ms. Manny?
I'd like to go back to the top of page six, where it's talking about, "Prior to the recording of a subdivision final plat, an easement shall be placed on all lands and private waters." I wasn't aware of the fact that we were allowing private waters to be counted as open space. Now, I agree with Kurt, where we were talking about, I could... We might be able to substitute the word "private waters" for "recreational waters," I suppose. But private waters ain't sounds... For example, a creek might be possibly part of stormwater abatement. I certainly wouldn't want to have it counted as open space, because it's certainly not usable. Yeah, and it's wetlands, as Mr. Bickel says.
Thank you. Anything else in this section? Obviously, again, we'll come back to this once we get through these points. I think we're about done with most of the red line, anyway. Next I see is page 10. Did I miss one? Sorry. I guess we need to go back to page seven. Thank you. Okay, yeah, I missed it there. Page, yes.
For those who may be listening online, or those in the crowd who are trying to help people listen online, the live stream link is actually the planning live stream link. It was accidentally incorrectly linked on the agenda, so please use the planning live stream link. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so on page seven, we have 24.8.3, where it says, "Land dedicated as common open space shall not be less than, it has been suggested a switch from 70%, which I believe was discussed in the last meeting, to 50%." And then the next red line change I see is page nine. At the bottom, under density units per acre. And the suggested change from the prior version was to go from 4.8 to 7.3 per acre. And for people listening, this is for R6, which has a cluster minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet. So we'll move on to page 10. And here we have another suggested change in the top chart. For R7.5, a suggested change from 3.8 to 5.8 per acre. For R10, a suggested change from 2.9 to 4.4 per acre. Yes, sir?
We just went back to the old zoning classifications and used those numbers, just trying to make a cluster where it would be feasible to use. And again, suggestions.
Thank you. Any questions there? All right, we'll move to table 24.2, the next red line changes, which... For minimum open space requirements, R6 through R15, in the last meeting, it was suggested for it to be at 70%, and this now has been suggested to change back to 50%. The same applies with R20 and R20A, with the original suggestion being 70%, and now the new suggestion being 50%. And we can... If there's any... Just make... And I think the best thing, too, is any places where it looks like we may have suggested other changes, just note that, and that way when we can come back to the discussion to kind of finalize this portion, we can address those. All right. So next would be under section three on page 10. And the red line would be to accept cluster residential development in LDR Article 24. Yeah, I guess it would help if I read the whole sentence. "A national vegetative or landscaped buffer of at least 20 feet wide and of density to achieve the privacy intent must be provided along all sides of the property adjoining residential and commercial developments, except cluster residential development in LDR Article 24." That made a lot more sense when I read the rest of it. Thank you. And then the next change we have on page 10 is under section four. "Amend Article 11 of the county land development regulations as follows, deleting it in its entirety and adding reserved." And then it just has the addition of section five. And then that's all of the red line changes that I currently see. So the next... Unless there are any questions there, we'll move to the next agenda item. Yes, sir?
On page 10, the table 24.2, it was originally the proposed, or the changes that have been stricken, was 70%, and now there's a suggestion of going to 50. Where... Did you say, Mr. Bradley, that 50 came from a prior... The prior version, or the current existing version?
It came from... Sorry. It came from discussing with the... I won't call them shareholders, but I won't say stockholders, but I had to say... It's got in my brain, after the discussing and looking at making the clusters a liable thing, we needed to change the open space to a smaller number. And other counties that we have looked at, there is this 50.
I was just trying to get an idea of where we were, where we went to, where we're going back from. I'm trying to see where the compromising's happening.
We felt, when we agreed with the...
Okay.
That feet 70 was too much, and so we backed it down to 50.
All right, thanks.
All right. Vice Chairman.
Thank you. The other issue that I'm a little bit concerned about is talking about, in terms of buffers. I would like to be able to see the buffers remain, but I don't want to have it counted as open space. I don't want these homes to be, excuse the expression, but up against the other existing neighborhoods. There needs to be a buffer, and it cannot be counted as part of the open space.
I also had concerns on page 10, section three, amendment, first paragraph, Article 8, section 821 of the LDRs there. "The intent is to protect the privacy of existing and future residents that join new subdivision, commercial developments, and natural vegetative or landscape buffer at least 20 feet wide of density to achieve the privacy intent must be provided along all sides of the property adjoining residential, commercial developments, except cluster residential development in LAR 24." Why... Who added that, and why? That absolutely cuts the feet right out from under Article 24. Exactly, yeah. So I don't... How did that... How did that get added in there? It needs to go, 100%.
Let's... If you don't mind, let's hold that for the... I think that'd be a good place to... We'll bake all these notes, and then we'll have it in the discussion.
Because when we go back into Article 24, and we talk about that, when you think about these things, I mean, I look in the neighborhoods I see now, and a neighborhood, I'm not gonna be specific, so I don't call anybody out here, but they promised the people behind them, they were gonna leave 30-footed trees. Instead, they came in and cleared it out and are replanting. Had they just left what was there, it would have been awesome, but for some reason, I don't know, overzealous land clearing, I have no idea. But we need to be very specific and very applicable in how we prescribe this, because they come in and just tear everything down. And that's not the intent, and we have to use our words, we have to pick our words very carefully from state law. Undisturbed, and we have to pick our words directly from the Enabling Act. We cannot give chance here to play games. Sorry.
No, thank you. All right, so we'll pick these back up in the actual discussion section to kind of finalize thoughts on this. And again, like Vice Chairman Bradley said, these are suggestions and discussions, so we can continue to refine this and hopefully get it in a place where everybody feels comfortable. The next item on the agenda is the overview of stakeholder feedback. And I believe, Ms. Gamble, is this the information that we have in front of us as well?
The stakeholder feedback was sent to you the day after the stakeholder meeting, I believe it was September 5th. You do have a printed copy of that, but everybody should have received that previously. The information that you have in front of you is information that I've received since then. There are comments from Upstate Forever, there are comments from a former planning commissioner, there is a... There are comments from a local developer who actually has done cluster development here, and they took a cluster development that they were able to do previously and used the proposed ordinance, applied it to that, and showed how it would work with the new proposal. Additionally, we received, just as I walked in here, we received an attempt at a design from one of the local design engineers that you will receive electronically after the meeting.
Okay, thank you, and just to obviously honor everybody's time, too, because I know everybody... We have a large group of people behind us, so thank you for being here. I don't know how many people were at the last stakeholder meeting, so as the planning commission and council members in attendance are here, they can look through the additional documents that were given to us today. I will go through, if people think it's appropriate, and kind of go over the comments from the stakeholder meeting, so the people can hear what those comments were, and we can address those during discussion if need be, so make notes there. And we'll do all... We'll do both of them. So this is from the Cluster Development Stakeholder Meeting Comments, Concerns, and Questions from 82825. First was, "What is the difference between undevelopable land in the old and new ordinances?" What's that?
We'll discuss it later.
The next is, "What is the difference between open space and common areas?" Then we have, "Please clarify cluster ordinances, open space, common areas, developable, and undevelopable land, so that there are no gray areas, pre-post-site with standards." And I'll note that some of these may be some of the suggested changes that were in this version we just went over. "What is the basis for every number in the ordinance, 20% slope existing or slope post-development?" Counselor McGahy said, " requested clarification on what Mr. Cyrus meant by gray areas. What type of information was missing from the ordinance that would make it clear for the developers?" I'm fine with that as well. Sure? Well, there's... Is there any discussion that the current stakeholders that are here would like to have, based on what you've heard, I guess, from the red line version, where we've... have based on what you've heard, I guess, from, from the red line version, where we've, where we came to, and that way we can have that in the discussion?
Hi, Ellis Forrest. Where the planning commission shall determine the dimensions and appropriateness of the open space seems very wide open and something that ought to be discussed prior to preliminary plat to make sure that the planning commission is satisfied with the dimensions and appropriateness of the open space. Seems like at the meeting itself is not the time to find out that planning commission doesn't agree with the dimensions and appropriateness of the open space.
Can somebody kind of make note of that so when we get to that discussion, we can bring that up specifically? Maybe.
What I'm saying is, if I'm developing a property, I would like to know if you agree that the open space is appropriate, the dimensions are appropriate, before I bring it in front of you to be vote, for you to vote yes or no, so that I can make the appropriate changes, knowing what it is that you are expecting from the piece of property that I'm developing.
I'll give you a quick synopsis of, you know, I'm fairly new to a lot of this, but I've lived most of my life in Greenville County. I think that you're right to question that. But the planning commission also has some subjectivity. Some people might not like that, but that's how it is, else we wouldn't listen to residents. We wouldn't provide them the time to come up and talk. Their, their feedback has some weight. They're also a stakeholder. So I think we have the challenge for us to be doing our job properly is to try to make you guys feel better about that, that you aren't flying into this blind when you show up at the planning commission. So we got to find some balance. So that's my personal take on it, and I believe the law gives us some subjectivity. There's a lot in the Enabling Act that talks about congestion. And so one of the things that you might want to do is make sure you're adhering as much to the character of the local neighborhoods as possible. When we make something drastically different, it's not probably going to be a good fit, and you're going to hear a lot of, a lot of local residents in the adjoining neighborhoods push back. But I'm, I'm devoted to trying to figure out how we get to a good balance, because it hasn't been working well recently. Else, we probably wouldn't have the huge turnover in county council that we did and other places recently.
Thank you for sharing. We'll make sure to bring that back up in the, in the discussion, Vice Chairman.
I think the other issue, and I agree with you, sir, about the subjectivity that the planning commission brings. All of us have been appointed by county council for our particular districts, although we've been asked to look at the entire county. What we've been finding with many of the developments is piecemeal open space. Little bits and pieces over here, bits and pieces over there, nothing that could, that the residents, the new residents can actually use for recreation. The Enabling Act talks about having usable and recreational ability inside that tract. We're looking for neighborhoods, we're looking for communities, we're looking to be welcoming to the new people who are coming here, thanks to the great advertising campaign of Greenville. But we're also wanting to make sure that we are respectful of the neighborhood consistency of the surrounding areas. And once again, the worry that I've had, and I've been on the planning commission now for a year and three months, is that we see insignificant amounts of quote-unquote "open space" being devoted to simply fill in the mathematical necessities of the tables. And that's, that's not meaningful. We want meaningful open space so that human beings can actually have a sense of community, a sense of neighborhood. That's what we're looking for.
If I may real quick, I agree that maybe there's a procedural or process that we can find to where you don't show up after spending thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars on a site plan, to only find that that's not the intent, right? So I agree with you. I want to work with you on changing the language or changing the process in such a way that you kind of, I don't know, I don't want to step on myself here, but like a pre-submit or something where you kind of, all the commissioners get a kind of comment period, and they submit that back to you anonymously, and you'll work with those comments, kind of, okay, here are the concerns that they had. Would that be something acceptable? I think that we can change procedurally, process-wise, and I think that's an excellent idea.
Thank you. Anybody else from, from the group have anything they'd like to? I was going to actually say, Ms. Barrett, I just was looking over what you had provided, and I definitely didn't want to read all of it, so if there's anything in specific you'd like to note for us to have in discussion, that'd be great.
Well, I think one of the things I said in there is, you know, what are the primary issues? And some of those seem to be coming out in this discussion, which is good, because it's hard to suggest remedies if you don't know what the real problem is. But I was just going to also say that meaningful open space can, doesn't have to all, I agree, you know, you want some recreational space, social space in your open space, but environmental areas can contribute and can be meaningful, absolutely. So, you know, that's why, like riparian buffers and other areas that provide ecological services are meaningful open space.
And I know that's one of the discussions we'll probably have is, is some of the buffers, there's been some discussion whether that should be included in open space or not, so that's a great point to make. And I'll just throw this in because I'm obviously leading the meeting because it's my, my job to do, but kind of listening overall, it seems to me like what's been happening in the past is regardless of what open space is considered, some of the stakeholders or people in this room have been following the guidelines they've been allowed to follow, which may have been interpreted one way or the other. And then the discussion from this side now is how, how do we address that to ensure that it's the proper way? Because you can't fault the people for following the rules that they can follow, so I think that's where the discussion is.
I don't know if everybody saw this online or this was just given to us, but if I could just give the crowd real quick, if you look at these two right there, on the left is cluster with the green, on the right is noncluster, standard density. What has changed? It's, well, yeah, we, all we've done now is allow them to increase density. Nothing else has changed. And that's his current cluster. That's, that's what we're trying to change. There's no meaningful open space there that's changed, and it doesn't have to be meaningful, it could be a conservation area, but nothing has changed. I mean, look at it, nothing. They're using setbacks, they're using buffer as green space. That's not the intent of cluster. So just to give a heads up, that's what we're trying to fight, is the abuse of just increasing density and changing nothing else. If you want to see this, you're welcome to have it, whoever wants it. Take a look, I'll have it back please though, because that's only copy, and I'll probably get another one, but take a look, let me know we're not wrong.
Would it be acceptable too for us to share the other two documents with, with our friends behind us if they want to take a look? Okay. This, I think this is a good section to have this discussion with any, anybody that'd like to mention that, so when we get to the discussion, we may have a long discussion or a very short one based on how this goes, kind of all be together. Anybody else have any other points based on, I guess, the changes that were suggested versus what you had heard from the first meeting? Or any additional feedback? This would be the good, a good timing agenda for that. Ms. Buchek?
So just a couple of comments, because I've been in these meetings, and I agree that there is definitely a disconnect sometimes between the letter of the law and what happens at the end of the day. So, and, and I, so I agree with that, that there needs to be more discussion. Also, I, I know this is already being worked on, but, and we've talked about it many times in the last four years, having a meeting with the surrounding community near the beginning of the process, not after the drawings are already done, is a very, could be a very useful tool to developers. Because some people in that area know what they're looking at and can give you meaningful feedback. The other thing is, I agree, because I just went through all the definitions in all the different documents that we have on open space, common area, developable, undevelopable, and I can tell you that when you put it all together, there are lots of loose ends in there. So I would recommend that you have a definitions portion, add a definitions portion to this document.
Thank you. Anybody else for this section? And we can, obviously, when we move to the next agenda item, we'll kind of go back through piece by piece and have the actual discussion, but this is a good way to start, I think. I guess something I would love to know from anybody who was at the last meeting that would help is, based on some of the changes, like the 70% to 50%, does that move the needle in opinion on where this currently sits, or do you still feel the same, too much? Still too much? Well, it's a, it's a good discussion piece to have. What would the suggestion be, just, just for discussion?
Thank you for your time. I mean, there's a lot of things I want to say, but to specifically talk about that question. The 50%, I think there's people here that would agree to provide 50% if other parameters are looked at and adjusted as far as being able to count riparian buffers. I mean, the word meaningful in itself is subjective. I think meaningful open space is timbered land and you don't cut the trees. This person may see meaningful open space is a clear grassed loam where the kids can go play. It's subjective. I think you have to look at the open space requirement, and let's just say 50%. Out of that 50%, there's different areas where you can pick up that open space. You may not be able to count 100% of the riparian buffers, but we need to be able to count a percentage of that, because it is meaningful, it's very meaningful. You know, the big push for water quality and everything, if you can leave those riparian buffers wooded, and it's very meaningful. So, you know, I think you could have certain percentages, like you can count 25% of your overall, overall open space required can be passive open space. And you should be able to count buffers. Maybe not 100% of the buffer, but you should be able to count at least some percentage of those buffers. You collectively add all of those up, where you hit every point. Timbered open space, passive open space, riparian buffers, and they all total up to where whatever the magic number is that's going to be required, right now it's being proposed 50%. But I think you have to look at it in those terms. If that makes sense.
Absolutely, Mr. Harrison. And I would say that maybe another term that I think some of the members on the, the panel up here may be thinking about would be usable, as far as the citizens being able to access it for some purpose versus it being meaningful, which doesn't necessarily mean that it could be used.
Sometimes, even if it's not usable by the residents, it still has a purpose, to be the buffer. And by definition, a buffer needs to be a certain amount of size, or else it's not a buffer. I don't know what that size is, and I think a lot of it's going to depend on the actual layout of the land. Each specific piece of land's going to have very distinct attributes that have to be looked at, but we really need to be, we didn't quite do this at the beginning, but what are our goals? Because that's your measuring stick, are you achieving what you set out to do? And even for this meeting, and what are our goals for this meeting? Are we achieving that as we walk through this? And I think we're making good progress here today, but we've got to come up with something, again, going back to finding balance, and sometimes we'll have to agree to disagree on things. But I hope we can all agree that what's been going on hasn't been working, and that's why we're here today, and there's going to be compromise. And an old fellow I used to work with told me many times, if everybody's a little bit ticked off, maybe a little bit happy too, then you probably have reached a good compromise. If one side's really happy and the other side's not, it's not a good compromise. And that's what we've had for too long. The residents and the current taxpayers are not happy.
Thank you. Vice Chairman.
I think the other issue, and I understand Mr. Harrison's concern, but developers are putting too many units into too little space. That appears to be what the public has been telling me, that they are very, very concerned about. The developers seem to think that maybe their subdivision is the very last subdivision before they go bankrupt. No. And these subdivisions that are being put in, they're going to last beyond our lifetimes. Once you ring that bell, it's rung. And these subdivisions will be there for 50, 100, 150 years. And what I believe that we're trying to do in Greenville County, because we're different than the city, I, I don't have a problem with cluster developments in abandoned properties in the city, for example, but urbanizing the county, we have gracious living here in Greenville County, and we're different than the city, and I want to maintain that difference. And I understand your concern about sensitive ecological areas. That's critical, absolutely critical. But the developers have taken advantage, put too many units in too little space, and that's what people are upset about. And I don't understand why they don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Ms. Buchek has a question or comment.
Actually, I just have a quick question. I think Jeff Randolph challenged everybody who came to the meeting.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I know my voice cares about two feet, so. Anyway, he had challenged, Jeff Randolph challenged those in the audience to take, to, to submit some drawings of things that they could, would be workable, and I did hear that there was one, something was submitted. Is that right, Hesha? Did you get, did you?
Is that the one you were mentioning that we didn't have yet?
I got one at 9:30, and I have one right here at 10:06, so I'll try to get those on the screen for you in just a second.
We can, we can move on and we'll come back, come back to that. I think we have a question right there. I could just stand up and walk around with the microphones, that would help.
I just want to bring up a point that I don't think has representation here at the moment, is those brand-new homeowners that are either moving into the area, or your younger generations that are trying to buy their first homes. A lot of these cluster-type developments allow us to be able to have that opportunity. A lot of new home builders don't want a lot of land to maintain, and then having more lots does allow that HOA to be able to maintain those open space areas. So just a point to consider as well.
Absolutely, thank you. I think we have another question up here. You can, I said I can walk around.
I wanted to respond to Ms. Manning's statement of the problem about too many homes in too small a space. So this is something that I think, you know, there's been a lot of confusion about. And I just want to be clear. The additional density, for instance, I'm imagining on that layout that Councilman McGahy shared, the additional density is still within the allowed density. Okay? So that's why developers are allowed to do it, and they're doing it, and that's their incentive for doing it. So the base density is what it is. And there are benefits if you have And there are benefits if you have enough open space and enough meaningful implementation of that open space. There are many, many, many benefits to compact development, locating all the homes in a more compact area. There are fiscal advantages to the developer and to the county in terms of amount of pipe laid, maintenance services, all kinds of things. There are many advantages, and that is one of the purposes of most cluster development, is that trade-off of, you know, yes, you get more compact development, the same density, not more. Now, there may be some loopholes in some way that I'm all for eliminating, so they're not getting any higher density, but that is the basic thing. It's, it's not higher density. It's just where the homes are located. And that's what I don't understand. If, just take me, take me a word that that's the situation, that it's the same density. Why are people opposed to that? Do they not like the way it looks from their neighborhood and they can see it? Do they not like the way it looks when they drive by on an existing road? What, what is the issue with that?
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. I will say, too, just to make sure everybody knows, the red lines that we went through were changes that were suggested, but I believe there's been additional changes since then that might address some of the density questions in a, in a positive way, hopefully. So I just want to make, make sure that was clear before we get to the next part of this. Councilor McGahy?
Ms. Barrett, I appreciate your comments. And as an elected official who knocked over 3,000 doors last year, I can tell you, the biggest concern isn't the way they look or where they're at, it's the traffic they produce and the infrastructure demands, all these additional houses put on. I live on Harrison Ridge Road. They're building another 300 houses right down the road from me, and it's already a nightmare on that road. I mean, a nightmare. It used to take me 15 minutes to get downtown. Now it takes me up to an hour. Just to get out of five forks, it takes you 20 minutes. So, but you asked, no, hold on, you asked the problem. So as elected official, it's not the same number. I'm with you, but what I'm saying is, they're opposed to, whether it's cluster or not, the average citizen doesn't even know what that is, and they don't care. All they know is that there's 100 houses going in there, and they're like, now, now it's going to take me another 10 minutes just to get out of my neighborhood, or a mile from my house. So as an elected official, that's, that's my concern to deal with, and I don't shrug that. And I understand everybody here is, wants to develop and make money and make lives. I get it. And it's America, you should be able to. But at the same time, I have to, as an elected official, it's my job to protect the citizenry that put me here. So for me to say, well, it meets all the regulations, who cares? I can't take that avenue. I understand you can, but I don't have that liberty, because I, I was put here to represent the 55,000 people in my district who, who, the majority of them feel differently, or they would have voted for my predecessor, who was on the other side of this argument. So I, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to let you know, as a public official, that's kind of, I see it as my duty. My personal feelings really don't matter a whole bunch. It's the people I talk to every day, and not one person has said, I wish you guys would allow more development. Not one, I can tell you. And I talk, people talk to me, I get 30, 40 emails a day, I get 10 phone calls a day. I'm out in the community, in the grocery store, I get stopped. My kids are like, put their hands on their head, oh, God, Dad's talking again. So, but not one person has said to me, in two years, I wish there were more houses.
All right. Oh, we have somebody in the back. And while they're, oh, there's already a microphone, never mind, I'll say what I was going to say in a minute. Okay, awesome. Hello, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't, I don't want to talk to your back, there's a reason I'm walking up here. I'm Coleman Schaus. I've been developing in Greenville for a number of years. And this discussion is, according to the document, is about ways to improve variable, I mean, to offer variable lot sizes, to offer densities that reflect demand in the market. And, but there are things in here that are policy changes that I'm not sure belong in a cluster ordinance. I did Boxwood. I don't know if you all know where Boxwood is. It's on Highway 14. And that was a 30-plus acre site completely. It had been logged, and the remnants left. And we put a cluster unit development on there, and we had 112 lots. It was zoned R12, and it was allowed 112, and we had an off-site detention pond, so we didn't have to use land, so we got 112 lots. And they were 50 feet wide by 105, 110. And it's been there 20 years. There is a three-acre common area as you enter. It was graded and, and grassed and treed and left to the use of the property owners, and they use it as an open space. Now, under this proposed ordinance, you have, you have changed the, you have a lot size of 8,000 feet in R12. And you, and you say you want variable lot, lots offered for a variety of houses, which means that we, we can't use the 8,000 to calculate the density, because some of the lots have got to be bigger, because they can't be smaller. Then you have changed the density about one-third. So if I did Boxwood today, I could only get 70 lots on what is now 112. Now, I also, under this, I have to set, because I have two highway frontages, I have to have a 200-foot buffer on each of them. So the result, the result of that is that I wind up with maybe 50 lots. And, but more significantly is that you've changed an R12 zoning to allow 70, because you've reduced the density in R12 by one-third. Now, is, I just want to know, is that your intent?
Well, I'll just, I'm not speaking on behalf of everybody up here, but just again, well, I was mentioning to Ms. Barrett, there has been some additional discussion about changes that we're going to discuss in just a moment, and I think some of that addresses exactly what you're talking about with a potential change that might be more back to what you, you were referring to.
Yeah, we, we're just trying to, to get a product in the market that the people need, and they need. If you don't believe it works, go look at Boxwood. And I can, I can show you others. But don't, don't fix something that we don't need to fix. We need to fix the process, absolutely. We've got to know what, what we're dealing with, whatever it is, before we get to the, to the planning commission meeting.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Schaus. And I'll say, I believe he, you also provided some comments for us that we have in front of us as well, so thank you for that. And I do want to address this as well. I'll take this partially as my responsibility, but technically, the process wasn't supposed to necessarily go to automatically, we're returning and talking back and forth, but since we don't have full council and full planning commission presence, pretty, pretty slim, I thought that this would be a good opportunity for us to discuss before we entered that part. So if it is chaotic, you can blame it on me. Am I working?
Hesha, would that not be considered, as a gentleman, not a cluster, but an open space development?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yes. Same thing. Open spacing. I don't know why.
Yeah. So open space development and cluster development are one and the same. It's just, for some reason, the names and the nomenclature is just, you know, interchanged. But they, they are, same regulations, same, it's just a different name.
All right. So I'll just take another minute or two, if there's any, any other comments or discussions we can have on that, and then we'll kind of go back through these, we'll go back through these points. Next on the agenda is the county council PC discussion, actually, on these, which is kind of where we, we, adjournment's the last one, but that's second to last. The most important ones coming up. So having said that, we'll, we'll kind of close this portion off, and we'll, we'll kind of go back through this as council and planning commission discussion, and then we'll move on from there. Having said that, next on the agenda is council and planning commission discussion, and if this would be acceptable, I'd like to go ahead and, and turn it over to Vice Chairman Bradley. He doesn't know I was doing this, but just to discuss some of the things that may have been a question from people behind us that, that might address some of those concerns.
Okay. We, we have met since we, shareholders meeting, and, and we realized that our numbers may not work. So we, we have looked at other, other alternatives on our, let me find my page here. He didn't tell me he was going to do this. Like such as R6. We looked at, you know, we, one of the things that's not been mentioned today was affordable, more, affordable housing may not be a word we can use, but more affordable homes. Looking at R6, right now, it's 6,000 square feet. At 50% open space, I don't see why a developer would want to do it. We looked at changing, and these is just look at and see, changing it to 20% open space and 3,000 lots, square foot lots. Same with R75. Looked at leaving it at 20% open space and 4,000 square foot, and we went on down the chart. Now, we hadn't made the numbers work, but the, the whole idea to me for a cluster is save trees, save soil, how meaningful or useful open space, but also if we're building less roads and having to do less stormwater, would it not be cheaper for the developer? So with all those things in mind, that's, it kind of makes it complicated, because all the numbers you have to put in, and then what's meaningful and what's not meaningful, and what's useful, but I, I think we'll get in there. But my idea of a cluster is, well, especially R6, you're not going to put R6 out in Fort Ho's, or you're not going to put it up and try, you don't put it in suburban edge where they have the, the infrastructure. And our planning or comprehension plan tells us where we should be putting these things. So it makes us follow those, and it makes us put the property where we need to put it. And I think playing with the numbers and finding some numbers where we can get them together, I'm not so much worried about the density as I'm worried about the usefulness of the property around it, the cost, if we can reduce the cost, if we can get the first time homeowners, the ability to buy homes that they can afford. That's my idea of a cluster. Not only does it do that, like I said, the trees, the soil, and the developer can make, developer who's out there to make money, and I understand that, and we want that to continue. So I think we can, looking at making the numbers work, we're willing to do whatever we can to get that to happen. I don't have all the answers. The team I'm working with doesn't have all the answers. We're looking to you guys to help to put something together so we can make this work for our citizens in Greenville County.
All right. So we will, we'll redirect our attention to each other as the planning commission and council here, and go back through these points, as well as, I, I just, so everybody knows, I did get an email from Mr. Jeff Randolph with some suggestion and changes, and I, I think it went to several people, but I'll make sure that everybody gets that as well. And just to acknowledge, for the record, people listening online, Mr. Schaus did send several pages of suggestions that we will look through, as well as Ms. Barrett and Ms. Clark, who provided quite a bit of information with some different maps that we will take a look at to go along with the other citizen feedback. I think the best to start would just be to go back to these original red lines or suggestions that anybody has had since then, so we can note those, discuss those, and continue a work and document to, to see where we're going to stand once this, this workshop is concluded. The first change that I saw, or that, that somebody noted that we needed to discuss was I think Councilor McGahy discussing the terminology, the navigable, navigable body of water. So I'll open this up for discussion on anybody who would like to speak to that, and we'll make some note, we'll move on from there.
Hello? There we go. So what I'm, what I'm finding from the county attorney in, in the past eight months, learning about all the, is, is that language is very important. So I agree with you, there, there's no, we can't, we can't set hard things that say, hey, 50 feet, nothing else. And I think you're right, there has to be a compromise on some of that, some of the, some of the buffer, some of the pond, some of the thing, all counts as a fraction of that to help out with, to make it feasible to work. So I agree with you 100%. We need to come up with some of those ratios and look at that. And there could be a table to incentivize this going on. Another thing I think we need to look at is, besides just make sure that we go through all those definitions, and when we put something in there like that, where did that come from? Who, I'm not, I'm not trying to place blame, but how did we come, how did that language come to be in the body of the paper? And, and what is, what was the intent behind it? Because obviously, someone put that there with intent. That, that's a very navigable body of water, is a very intentful statement. It's not like a stream or just a body of water, right? That's, that's a definite definition there. So we need to be very careful as we move through there and look at that. So, you know, I would welcome comments from, from people that are involved in that, and you know, are we talking riparian buffer, which we address elsewhere in the document? We just need to take a close look and make sure we're not circling ourselves on that. And I can, one more quick comment is, we talk about housing units and costs and affordable housing. My thoughts on affordable housing and government's responsibility to provide housing for its citizens are mixed, so I won't share them here, but I would like to say, as an example, I don't think if we, that's a valid argument, in the sense that if you look at Belwin, which is being done by Hartness, those are going to be million-dollar cluster homes. They are not affordable homes. I couldn't afford one. Most people in this room probably couldn't afford one. There's probably a lot of people in the room that maybe live in one. But my point being is, maybe we incentivize builders to say, hey, if you are going to build cluster, I don't even know what number, 10% of it has to be under $200,000, or entry-level homes. But then you get into people in million-dollar homes who want to live next to a $200,000 home. So we have to be very careful when we say, this makes, this makes houses more affordable. That is entirely not true. It's a false statement.
All right. So let's, back to, back to 24.3. Huh? What's that?
I would say that is beyond, like what you said, it's absolutely true, supply and demand. We, we shoot for pace, you know, like, we want to sort of sell certain houses per month, and us building enough homes to supply the market determines the price. So, absolutely, this leads to affordability. There's lots of books out there that you can talk about it. It's, it's just, what you said, actually, I'm sorry to say, is pretty.
We just, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I'm here, I'm talking to the board, and I think the whole affordable housing issue is sort of a false argument that people will defend themselves for putting forward, to increase policies and, 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 and.
All right. So again, I'm, I'm going to take this back, it's, it's my fault for, for kind of turning our workshop into what we did with the back and forth, but I want to make sure we bring our attention back to the, the current agenda item, which is the planning commission and council discussion. Also to respect everybody's time, cause I know we're getting closer to, to noon, and I know everybody's got a lot to have to do. Um, so if we can just stay on task on this one, I'm sure we'll have more opportunities to discuss. But under the 24.3, what is the solution to the question, I guess, is what I'm asking? Is there a terminology that we could suggest changing? Or to Counselor McGahey's point, who, or who was the originator of this language? And why did we have it in there the way that it was? This could be a staff question, maybe? Vice Chairman?
Just take out the word navigable and put, and put...
So, any, uh, the chairman suggesting that we just potentially change it to any body of water? Alright. So, we can, we can, we'll just make notes there for, the question is keeping navigable, I think, is the primary point there. So, yes. Okay?
Okay. Um, so when I look at this, um, as far as the navigable water, body of water goes, it mentions public or private roads, but just before that. So, the idea is that the, when this was written, and I didn't write this, so I'm not, I'm just kind of giving my idea of what I think the intent may be. The intent is that a navigable body of water, something you could bring a boat down or something like that, would essentially exist as a road, like how you bring a car down. So, you don't want your development parcel to be bisected by something that can't be crossed. If you're thinking about the cost of putting a bridge in or a road in over that, then it's not gonna be very feasible as a development parcel that you want to exist as a cohesive development altogether when it is developed. So, I think what we need to determine is what types of waterways are we okay with? What classes of waterways are we okay with being on a development parcel? Are creeks okay? Are navigable bodies of water? I, I, I think that is easily out of the picture. But what types of streams? What types of rivers? How big? And what makes something not a good, something bisect the property or cut it in half in a way that it would not make it be cohesive when you go to develop it? I think that's what we, what you wanna look at in terms of how to redo this statement.
So, then based on what you're saying, it would, sounds like it's something we would need to expand upon the current terminology to be more specific.
Right. Yeah.
And that, that might be better to do that than just say any as well, cause any might be too much. Alright. And I don't take notes well, so hopefully somebody else is taking notes. I know Ms. Manning does, and, okay, thank you, awesome. Alright. Uh, and then I guess maybe somewhat included in that conversation came from 24.5. I have circled private waters. I'm not sure who, who brought that up. Was that Ms. Manning? Um, what, what were the, is this another one where it would be, needs, need to be expanded on? Or what, what was your, what was the point on this one? So, maybe this might be another staff question, similar to navigable, cause that makes perfect sense. How you explained it, "Prior to the recording of subdivision, final platine easement shall be placed on all lands and private waters used to satisfy the open space requirements of cluster development."
I mean, that, that could just be, I mean, recreational waters, or it's just, it's just a known, like I said, it's just a, a different terminology to use than the word private, I think.
Is there... Would recreational change the, the, the language in a negative way there? Another suggestion is to say all water? Uh, it is right at the top, at the top there. Yeah, I don't think we have too much to go through on this. I just wanna make sure you hit all the parts that we had. Right. We'll just take a look at that. The next section that at least I had noted that there was, uh, discussion on, which seems to be maybe one of the bigger portions, is section three on page 10. The discussion, I believe, was, uh, came from Counselor McGahey, and it was, why did we add the language at the end? To exclude cluster residential development in L E R Article 24? Is that, am I saying that correct, Counselor? Um, anybody, alright, so anybody, anybody know where that addition came from? Or if we've, if there are any suggested changes to not have that in there? Or did it just magically appear? So, would a suggestion be to take that out? Just remove it?
One of the things that takes buffers out of it.
Having the language in there? Or if we were to remove it?
Yeah, apparently. It says, except for clusters. You, you want buffers in cluster. Are you mean counting them toward the open space calculations, or it...
Does this work?
Yeah, it's on. Yeah.
I, I could share where that comes from. It comes from another county who has these cluster designs. And they do not have buffers. However, one of the reasons is, they're not allowed to count buffers as open space. If you don't have a buffer, the developers get to count it as open space. So, how do you address the issue of distance from the nearest lot line to the property line? What that county does is it makes 75 feet. The nearest property line, the area property line to the lot is 75 feet. The nearest property line, the nearest road to a lot is 200 feet. That's how they do it. They move the lot lines away from property lines and don't have a buffer, giving the developer an opportunity to take that buffer area and count it as open space. It's one of those compromises.
How do you avoid clear cutting?
It comes from Ory County and York County.
So, if you look at the drawing, it shows 75 feet.
The drawing shows 75 feet from the property line to the first lot, to the closest lot, and from the road to the closest lots, 200 feet. Yep. That comes right out of York County.
How do you avoid clear cutting again? I, you got people next door gonna be mad.
It also says saves 20% of the trees.
That is more than what this county allows.
You can put the buffers back in, and you can take some percent of the buffers. You can do that as well. There's lots of ways you can do this, but I'm just sharing, this is how other counties do it.
Alright. Well, for the, for the purpose of time and, and moving the, uh, the meeting along, let's, let's circle that with a, a bigger circle, so we can address that one moving forward. Alright. Thank you. Um...
Just for clarification, the 200 foot is egress and degress.
Where, and just for people listening again, cause I know some people might be confused, cause I'm not sure if they can hear all of us, but what, what specific section was this, was this in? I, I was trying to find it. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. We'll make that, make those notes. Mr. Henderson made a good point. I'm, I'm trying to get to the page. But thank you. Page 10. Uh, it, it doesn't look like it really makes sense to separate them unless there's something I'm not seeing either. But R six through R 15, and then R 20, and R 20A should just really be combined into one, one section, because it's the same suggested change. So, basically, they could all be included in the same cell. And that's different than this. I, I think what, um, what he said is that R six through R 15 has new suggestions of a scale from 50 back to 20 based on the, the density, and the other ones don't. So, maybe that's why they would stay separate, which is still more discussion we need to have there. Yeah. That's where I think it's gonna be tough here until we go through the other suggested changes that aren't currently on this agenda. So, that's, again, we're working. Right. Okay. Well, and I wanna go ahead and throw these out there. Uh, Counselor Farmer had to leave, but he did have some questions, so I wanted to fill these, cause these would be part of this discussion. Number one, he says, "Has staff modeled how much additional land will be consumed under the proposed changes to the current cluster standards? And how that conflicts with the county's stated goals of preserving rural land and reducing sprawl?"
Staff has not had an opportunity to do that yet. I believe there were some additional changes made yesterday, so we haven't had a chance to, um, model that, but we certainly can take a stab at it.
Okay. Uh, number two, he says, "If cluster developments are reduced and pushed into more traditional subdivisions due to reduce yield, what impact will that have on infrastructure costs, i.e. roads, sewer, and schools? Since clusters were originally designed to lessen those burdens?" And I know a lot of these might be stuff that we're not answering today, but just, just to get them out there. Um, number three, "Given that the cluster development was adopted to align with the comp plan's goals for smart growth, how does changing the open space requirement advance the plan, or does it undermine the plan?" Uh, number four, "How will increasing open space requirement affect housing attainability in Greenville County's competitiveness, particularly when builders, developers will have to spread the same cost across fewer lots?" And then five, "Does the proposed ordinance actually work as the image shows? Pictured development does not work on a 63 acre tract. It ends up in negative acreage," which I believe was maybe alluded to in the stakeholders' meeting as well. So, these can just be questions that we can, we can get back to Counselor Farmer as well. So, if there's no other questions on what's currently there, um, Ms. Gamble made an excellent suggestion too. If, if everybody here, at least so far, will be in agreeance to a potential additional workshop to address the already proposed changes to everything we heard today from our friends here, as well as ourselves, and then we can see where we end up there. And I think we'll be in a way better place. We have a lot more information at that point. Everybody good with that?
I, I would agree. We'll be, we're already closer where, I believe we'll get closer and closer to, uh, agreement on what's best for Greenville County.
Alright.
Make sure that, um, whatever date we come up with, all that obviously has to be published, um, so many days ahead of time. But we also put deadlines in for, let's get the copy done, the red line done. And if you don't have your, whether it's the public, councilman, planning commissioners, anyone, you've got this deadline to put your changes in, your suggested changes, and we're not gonna just do it on the fly. It's gonna be, you gotta have it in so many days ahead of time, and then we incorporate that in, give plant, give the staff time to do what they need to do with it, and then time for us to look at it, so the first time we're seeing it is not in a workshop. Cause we need to be doing our homework before then.
Well, I will get with the other chairman, and I'll get with Ms. Gamble, and we'll, we'll get that put together, so we'll, we'll be more organized the next time as well.
The, the other thing, it's, it's related, but it's not exactly cluster. One of the things I'd like to see, and I'm, I'm asking the councilmen, those few of you that are here today, to maybe put forth, uh, a motion, an ordinance, if it even needs to be that, to where we do a study of our existing infrastructure and see what the capacity is. And where are we for every system and subsystem in this county that the public uses and pays for? Where are we already? That'll go and be used in, as input into our impact fees and various other places. Planning commission could be looking at that as well when we're making decisions. What's our current capacity for every single system? And it's not only where it is, but where we project it to be based on what's getting approved. And that gets updated quarterly and published to the public on the county website.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, before we have a final motion, I just wanna thank everybody for being here. I know that you all have jobs and are very busy during the day, so hopefully it wasn't too chaotic, and hopefully we can find a place where everybody feels more comfortable with this. And I would encourage everybody to, uh, continue reaching out to us with feedback. Send it to staff or to any of us that you can find our information online, and we'll make sure to take that up in the next workshop. And we'll try to make sure it's announced way ahead of time, cause I know, like I said, I respect your time. Uh, we all have a lot of stuff we have to do. So, thank you very much for coming and being patient and listening, and thank you for the, the dialogue as well. And thank you to the planning commission. Thank you to the staff and for council members who are here for taking time to do this. I think it's important, and that's what the workshop isn't, can't be really structured anyway. It is, a lot of it's a discussion. So, thank you. And with that, I will, I will entertain one final motion. All in favor? We are adjourned.